I'd like to call to order the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, September 14th, 2017. Road call, please. Kathy.
Joseph York.
Here.
Paul Rabbs.
Here.
David Keane.
Here.
David Keane.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Garvin.
President.
Here.
Okay. Presentations of any town council recognitions. I don't believe we have any. Item four, considered minutes of previous meetings. Okay. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. The first one being Verona Police Call, 912-017. Susan.
That is, the sheriff's, Hancock County Sheriff's requested that Bucksport Police check on the status of a person walking to the bridge, which is what the past several have been. And in that, those emergency situations, Bucksport responds, which they did and met with a trooper. This is on here because our agreements require that these be shared with the council.
Thank you. Any questions? Item B, Down East Transportation Monthly Ridership Report, August 2017.
Yes, this is the bus and the taxi usage that Bucksport contributes to. And a particular note, the taxi is getting a lot more usage, if you'll notice, than it was before. I know the Senior Resource Group and actually Leslie Rabbs in particular has been doing a good deal of promotion of this locally so that more people will be using it. So it's working.
Is this a flat weekly rate?
Yes, the hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars, yeah. Okay. Item C, Free Pesticide Disposal Program Information.
Yes, there's information in the packet. The main Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry's Board of Pesticides Control and the main Department of Environmental Protection are sponsoring a program where people can get rid of for free unusable pesticides. There is a requirement that there's a registration before this. There's information in the packet which is on our website, or anyone who wants more information can contact me. But the website is thinkfirstspraylast.org, and that's where the information is on where to get your permit to be able to dispose of this at no cost.
Any questions? If not, we'll go on to item six, New Ordances to Be Considered or Introduced. I don't believe we have any tonight. So we'll go on to item seven, Discussion Items for Managers Clarification or Direction or Council Discussion on Input on Issues. The first one being Senior Citizen Director's Proposal.
That would be me. First of all, I'd like to say to the council and the town that we at the Senior Center are grateful for all of the support that we receive from the town. However, it's become clear to me in the last three years that we need a more steady income than what I can glean from the stipend we get from the town of Bucksport, Orland and Verona, grants, the $1 a day activity fee that seniors give, and yard sales. It's just, we just need more of a cash flow in our budget to meet all of our expenses. I mean, we're just okay, but there needs to be more of a cushion. And so that's why I gave it a lot of thought, and I propose that since you've already budgeted for me for 20 hours a week, if I dropped back to 16 hours a week and you gave that, the town gave that four hours pay a week to the Senior Center, then that would help us out. That would give us close to 3,000 a year to put into our budget. And I've gotten approval from the board. I discussed it with Susan, and that's what I'm proposing. Now, you might ask, how do I plan to do that? I've got a part-time job, 20 hours a week, a lot of different things to do, and how am I going to cut back four hours? So what I did this week in anticipation of perhaps I would get that question, and I did a little bit of it last week, what I'm doing is I'm arriving at 7:30 a.m. rather than 8:30. I'm up anyway and usually doing things around my house. That gives me the opportunity to do uninterrupted work, email, working on grants, doing reports, whatever. So my time is more efficient. I still have to make sure that I am giving time to socialize with seniors because that is a big part of our Senior Center. But I can get the other work done earlier. We do, I've advertised in the paper, we need more volunteers. I can't have all of the work falling on one or two volunteers if I'm not there for a few less hours a week. I am going to cut down on meeting time. I request to be first on the agenda when I go to a meeting, and I will probably be there for half an hour, and then, and then I will leave, read the minutes, whatever, just to be more efficient. I need to have a presence in the town at meetings and Senior Resource, but I'm just going to cut the time back because I really feel it's very important for me to make those contacts. The other thing is that this personally is a good time of year for me to take on a new challenge. I, for most of my life, I was either a student or a teacher, and to me, fall is just my high-energy time of year. It's my time that I take on new challenges. So this is the new challenge that I propose to take on to help meet the goals that I think we need to meet, the financial goals at the Senior Center.
Why don't we just increase your time and decrease your salary?
I told myself that I would just smile when you make a comment, Dave.
You know, I can appreciate what you're trying to do here, but I look at this that, you know, I've seen what the Senior Resource folks have done. I see what you do down there, and it is a valuable service. We can find $3,000 for you to keep your hours. I would, I would propose that we find the $3,000, you keep your hours. You're doing a great job. It's a needed service around here, and, you know, that's just, I appreciate what you've done, but that's crazy, in my opinion. I think we can find $3,000 to up the ante right now. That's where I stand.
I agree.
Well, we're taking up this later down on the agenda.
Okay, well, whatever you decide, I thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comment for the public on this? We're gonna, we're gonna take it up later down in the resolves, so I'll, before we vote on a resolve, I'll ask for public input anyway, okay? Item B, Chamber Update for 2025 Festival, Leslie and Shelby.
What was happening meantime? Oh, they're working on, what they're working on over there. She's got a nice little presentation for you. I just want to, again, thank you guys. I hope everybody, I saw some of you there. I didn't see everybody there, though, but then, you know, I was busy. I might have been doing some stuff. So, but I just want to thank you guys. I think this year's festival was fantastic. I hope you feel the same way. We've had so many incredible positive comments from so many people, and it's you guys to thank for that. There's no doubt in my mind. So I just want to make sure you understand that and that you feel that for me. The other thing is, is I gave you guys the budget. I sent it over. I know, I might not, I hope I made it into packets, because
It was after the package.
It was afterwards, I'm sorry. But essentially, in the budget that I sent you guys, I've, I want to give $5,000 back from what, you know, you gave to me. I wanted it to be more. I really did, but that didn't pan out. Some of the things that we learned that were interesting to me was we really did change the demographic. There was a different demographic at this festival. And how I know that is that my kids' center, even though we had so many more people, my kids' center did about the same as my kids' center in the years before. So it wasn't extra young families that were here. My vendors were thrilled with how much money they had crossed across their tables compared to other years. So that's who was here. It was people with money. Families, they have some money, but they're going to use it in a different way. So all those craft vendors, we had a guy down there on the, on the other side of the gazebo selling $150 chairs, and he was selling $150 chairs. It's fairly impressive. And our Main Street businesses all came forward and reiterated that same kind of idea that the people that were here had money and came and spent money. Isn't that what we want overall? So that was really neat. Verona Wine and Design had one of their great best days. Crosby's, where the car show was, had the best day as far as tickets written they've ever had. Think about that for a second. They've been around a long time. So that's pretty cool. Folk Stacks had a fantastic day. They had the Still Mill book release was that day. It was brilliant. So that was really neat. Walls Dairy Port, he did about the same as he normally does. Again, it's that different, right? That wasn't, the core group that we always have are the families that came, they came and they did their thing, and that's the money, they spent that money the way they always spend it. It was those other folks we brought in. I think that's pretty spectacular. So, yeah, and I'm really happy that we can at least give something back, because that was my goal. We know that. When you look at that budget, it shows 14,000. I try and have 16 go forward to each, each new year. That's my, in my budget, my big overall budget, because the festival's part of that. So I feel like 14's close enough to 16. I'm good. I had some surplus from a couple years ago, so that works out. Of course, the real challenge now is the bar has been set high, hasn't it? So we'll have to come up with some great plan to do something that is equally as exciting, but with less money. So.
I really hope we can get that going.
No, darn. It was really good. So I'm Shelby Wright, and for those of us who haven't met, I think I've met most of you. I'm not sure. We have. But I was the festival coordinator, and I just wanted to say, like, to start, like, you know, these days, small towns and communities are looking for things to do to bring people into their communities. And I think Bucksport is so lucky that you have an established event that you've been doing for 20 years to build on. You don't have to invent, you know, a Red Hot Dog Day or a Whoopi Pie Festival. You know, you have the Bucksport Bay Festival that has been going on, and it's a great tradition. And to be able to build off of that success was one of the things I think that made this year's event so successful. You know, it could not have been as successful as I feel that it was if it hadn't been for the 19 times that it had happened before. So I have to give a huge, you know, shout out to everybody that's made that possible in the past, and Leslie for doing it, and all of the volunteers that really just came together. And I won't say they made my job easy, because it wasn't, but I will say that they made it a pleasure to do instead of a challenge, you know, trying to overcome obstacles, but, you know, creating something from scratch. So that said, you know, thank you so much. And that's just, I think, for future events, you, like Leslie said, you've kind of set the bar now, and for future events, I think that it's going to be even easier to build on. So when we started this, and when I got the phone call and started talking with businesses and chamber members and just volunteers throughout town, the thing is that we realized should be objectives for the 225 Celebrate Bucksport Bay Fest was broaden the demographic, was to build on the families that we knew were already coming to the event, to increase traffic and the dollars for Main Street businesses. That was a big concern that I had heard, that the festival sometimes like kind of sucks up all of the air in the room, and the people don't really come up onto Main Street. And so that involved also attracting, you know, an older demographic, building on those families, but also attracting that demographic of like 35 to 65 with more disposable income and less smaller children. And then engaging the businesses in the event themselves, you know, getting them to do things that had something to do with the 225, whether it was ice cream cones for $2.25, or, you know, there was, Book Stacks had their, their book opening. There was different things at the Lighthouse Art Studio. You know, there were specials around town. I think Ramona's had some bands and some specials and just, but getting people engaged in the festival itself, and then also keeping people at the festival. Because that was another one. People come for the parade, they play for a minute, and then they're gone, and you don't see them again until the fireworks. So these were, I think, were the, the big challenges. And, you know, talking to the mayor and talking to Rich. There was also this desire to have featured events that would keep people there, but would also be a positive impact. I think you had said, Mayor Keane, that you wanted people to talk about this for years. You know, that was kind of one of your, you know, like, goals of the festival. So basically, bigger, better, and bolder. And I think, you know, in a way, in a lot of ways, we accomplished just that. You know, we had a bigger parade than they've had for years. The fireworks display was, you know, tremendous. There were more vendors down on the waterfront, and there were more people spending money at those vendors. A lot of businesses got involved, and I'm sorry I don't have my PowerPoint. I had some great images for the day from the different events and the different live talent that we had. Some really striking images of just how many people were actually down there, you know, enjoying the acts on the waterfront, participating, walking on Main Street at the street dance on Friday night, or bouncing in the bouncy houses, to just standing there, sitting, eating ice cream, and just enjoying themselves on the beautiful Bucksport waterfront. I think it was really tremendous. We had a lot of new activities. We had the first-ever Bucksport Bay Festival pageant. We had the street dance, which was a new addition. The Historical Society did a walking tour and a map of 15 historical homes that they can use again and again, that you can now go and, you know, look at that. Let's see, we had more votes in the parade. Oh, the tugboat Pentagon had 1,000 people onboard that day, the clicker, attendance of 1,000 people. She's already talked about, you know, Crosby's and some of the vendors that we saw. We also had the first-ever Bucksport, excuse me, Friars Invitational Brew Fest, which I think, again, is something that we can grow on. So there's a lot of room to grow, and there's a lot of things to kind of shore up more of. We had the, the first-ever Pizza Face Off with Camden National Bank. I think that's a great idea. This really could get some traction. Timbertina wants to come back again, you know, the axe throwing, except for when the guy threw the axe over the thing and hit the actual boat. But that was beside the point. You know, we even had Jeff Curlin as an official photographer that was posting everything at the event on Facebook. So that got a lot of traction. And the Silver Lake Bass Fishing Tournament, thank you very much, Councilor Gavin, for working with that, which, again, can be grown and improved. And, you know, people came together, and they did luncheons, and they had reunions and things. Their family came, and they had, there were picnics around town. So it was just a great community event, I think, all in all. And I just thank you so very much for letting me be a, me be a part of it. It was truly a pleasure to, to help. You're welcome. Are there any questions for me at all? Do you have anything to say? Anybody comment, feedback?
I enjoyed the Brew Fest.
Yeah, you did.
That goes without saying.
And that's something that could be a standalone event, or it could be part of the festival.
Maybe even, and the chief's probably gonna freak when I say this, but is there a way to put it on the water, to get it on?
You know, like I said, you know, we started. There were no incidents. I think, you know, Chief will attest that it ran relatively, well, not relatively, right, but they, she came. It was preloaded, you know?
Wasn't made.
But, you know, I think there's a couple of things with that. There was a lot of good feedback, you know, things we could do differently, things we could do better. And, you know, we talked to the Friars about it. One of the things was that they weren't actually pouring. Next year, they're totally onboard to do it. I think they wanted their toe in the water a little bit, too, before they really got this going. And I don't blame them, you know? It was a risk, and it was, it was the first time, you know? The venue, having music and food actually at, or within the, you know, area there was another one. Some people were going to come, but then the music wasn't inside, so they ended up not coming and just going down to the waterfront. I think that hurt our tenants a little bit. But, you know, you live and you learn, and you move forward. So whether the Brew Fest is a standalone event of its own, which could thereby serve to bring even more people at a different time of year, you know, into the community, or it continues to be part of the Bay Fest, I think that would, you know, that's something we have to look at going forward. Anything we can, like, kind of peel off to bring even more people at a different time, you know, into town, I think is.
I just see what they have in Bangor on the waterfront this weekend. They have the Rib Fest, and they've had the brews, they've had the wine, the wine. I just think it's a nice touch to it, whether it's a standalone or not.
Right. I agree. But, and, and logistically, as far as space and, you know, size and all that stuff, I think we have a much better idea of what it looks like now, like, just actually, like, visually looks like. And so we can go from there. So I'm glad you enjoyed it. I know, like, we were talking about, look, next year, next year, like, right there. So it was good. Mason's, like, ran out of, of their beverage, I think, a half an hour before it was over. So there were 89 people. That wasn't so bad for the first time. It didn't look like a lot of people, because it was such a huge space, but there was 89 people there, which is pretty good, I think, for the first time.
You were a coordinator fundraiser.
Oh, well, thank you.
Can you tell us how much sponsorship you've got, financial help from sponsors?
So bills and invoices that have been paid, $18,000. There are some outstanding. To the tune, I think I raised about $21,750, like, overall. So there's still a couple of folks that haven't actually mailed the check, so to speak. But at this point, there's $18,000 that we've actually received and, you know, invoices paid.
Now, if these people so graciously send the checks in,
Yes.
will that come back to the town?
That is a conversation to have with the chamber, as I am a subcontracted employee that was to organize an event, not to deal with the financials of setting it.
I can tell you this, like, I, like I said, I need to walk away with 16 in order to make my budget correct. Right now, I'm at 14.
So four comes back.
I need $5,000 back. So
And that includes the money that they've not yet.
As long as I actually get everything. Because Sammy, when you're late, when they haven't paid now, sometimes they don't pay. I'm not going to lie.
Well, they haven't met me, twice.
But we're hounding them. So, yeah, I mean, that's something.
That always happens, too. You know, people pledge.
It's a $2,000 difference right now. It's really, it's 399 is what's out there still.
And what was the total cost of entertainment?
14 something.
14?
Well, yeah, but you gotta add in
You have to put a stage in.
That's to straighten out what you paid the musicians.
Right.
That's not the additional cost of extra advertising, extra
Stage lighting. Now, keep in mind, too, Bucksport now owns that stage. So for the same price that we could rent, could have rented an actual stage for, now you actually own one that's modular and can be taken apart and used in any way, shape, and form with a cover. And it's being very generously stored at Johnny Wardwell's place for free right now. So you, the town can even rent that out if it desires, if it's so desired to make some revenue off of that.
We also paid for additional electrical upgrades down there that will allow for the additional, for higher octane, shall we say, events. They are more electric usage, which it was almost 1,500.
Yeah, and I think that was an unexpected expense. It was a, you gotta do this, or you don't have any doughnuts and cotton candy.
Any further questions from the council here on this? I'm going to open up. Jimmy, you want to speak about, you have a question?
Just a quick question. Is there a, they're throwing a lot of numbers here and there, this much here and there, you know, is there a budget written out that the town should be able to get, possibly?
Okay. Any other questions?
And Mr. Morrison, there's a break. Further breakdown of all the bills that the town paid to the chamber that, for the individual vendors, that, that address each of those topic areas that, that support the number. I did that and gave
That's probably what I want to see.
Yeah, well, that, I provided a copy to the Enterprise this past week and how we did that, and I've broken that down. I'll get you a copy, because that breaks down who got what under each.
Okay. No more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a wonderful weekend.
Hope to see you next year.
And thank you for organizing the weather, please, because that was
I told you, it's package. Does it rain on Zoo Day? And if anybody wants to, that story, I'll be glad to tell it. I tell it all the time. But, no, does it rain on my events? Just doesn't. Didn't happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going on to item C, Electrical Service Installation, Additional Lots at the Business Park. Susan?
As you all know, we added eight lots to the Business Park. We installed water and sewer. We've built a road. We've paved the road. And the electric service has not been extended from the end of the first one to those eight additional sites. And in order for those to be marketable, we need to add the electric service to them. Winkampah Construction is the vendor that Central Main Power uses to do line installation. Rich Rotella got the estimate from them for the cost of installing electric service to service those eight lots, which is $14,075. There's a, a resolve further on in this, but that's the purpose of this. There is a business interested currently in one of those lots, and we can't move forward with that unless or until we install electricity.
Will that be three-phase power? Okay, again, that's an item we're going to take up down in the resolves. We'll ask for public input at that time. Item D, Consent Agreement, the town and Miles Fredden and Alan Kelly Han. Susan?
This is a consent agreement developed by the code office, code enforcement officer to address a land use violation that was identified on property, map 19 lot 26, that had to do with disposal systems, et cetera. But Jeff has come up with this and has worked with the, with them, that this addresses the violation in a non-litigious fashion. And is there any other details, Jeff, that you had on this?
I can give you a little background as to what led up to this consent agreement. In the fall of 2015, the owner of this property at the time applied for and received a permit to install a replacement septic system using primitive system criteria. Now, primitive system, septic system is, is the, is one that, is the smallest system you can put in, and it's designed to handle only hand-carried or hand-pump water. And that's key to this, the issue that we're dealing with here. It wasn't made known to me by the owner at the time that he intended to install a bathhouse with a shower and a sink and a water heater all pressurized to work properly. So I permitted the system, inspected it, and approved it for use as a primitive system. A few months later, the tax assessor made me aware that there was a structure on this property that had been built without a permit, and it looked like it contained plumbing fixtures that had a vent through the roof. So I looked into it and come to find out there was indeed a structure that was built, required a permit, didn't get, didn't receive a permit or apply for a permit. They required a plumbing permit, no permit was applied for or received for that. So between the time I permitted the septic system and the time I became aware of the structures, the property changed hands. And so now I'm talking to the new owner about these issues that he had no involvement with. In fact, he was assured by the owner that, the seller of the property, that everything they saw on the property was properly approved by the town. So I was left with having to deal with these issues with the current owner. And it didn't seem reasonable to me to take this matter through a court process and require the current owner, who wasn't responsible for these violations, to deal with correcting them 100%. So what we decided to do instead, and the owner is agreeable to this language, is to, first of all, he was required to have a replacement design done that showed an area where a larger conventional system could be installed if the primitive system failed. He's done that. Secondly, he's required, according to the agreement, to take water conservation measures to ensure that the existing field is not overburdened with wastewater. Just to let you compare the, the is not overburdened with wastewater. Just to let you compare, the, the primitive disposal field is designed to handle only twenty-five gallons of wastewater per day. The smallest conventional full-size system you can have for a home requires a field that's designed to handle a hundred and eighty gallons per day. So, there's a big difference between a primitive system and a regular system. So, he submitted a plan for a hundred and eighty gallon per day disposal field if this one should ever fail. I'm confident it won't, as long as the current owner is using it. There's only two people that stay at this camp, and they don't stay there throughout the summers periodically. So, I'm not concerned about the current field to be, to malfunction under the current usage. So, that's why we're proposing this consent agreement. If it's approved by the council, it will be recorded, the registry deeds, once assigned by the, the current property owners.
Thank you. Any questions?
And Jeff, you, you feel confident with this agreement as far as...
Yes, I've had numerous discussions with the current owner about the, the issues, about using that system appropriately, and, and I'm confident that they will do so.
Again, this will be an item on the agenda. Next one being voting delegate for credentials for main municipal convention for Wednesday, October fourth. Susan?
Um, the, the town is a member of the main municipal association, and at the annual meeting at the convention on October fourth has the ability to have a delegate vote at that meeting. And this is where you name who those delegate and, and alternate would be. I will be attending, to the best of my knowledge, Councilor Rabs is attending that day. I haven't heard that anyone else from the council had planned to, to go. And therefore, if you wanted to, you could designate Councilor Rabs as the voting delegate with me as an alternate in the event that you didn't attend. And, um...
Well, last year, it was just the opposite. You were the primary and I was the alternate, so...
So, I think it's only fair that you be the primary.
So moved. Thank you. Mr. Stewart, I'd like to talk to you. Thanks for stepping up.
If you make a motion and a vote, then you can sign this, and I can send it.
Is that down here also?
No, it is not. This is not a resolve.
So, how would the council like to proceed?
So moved. Councilor Rabs is...
The voting delegate?
The voting delegate.
You wanna make that for all time, or just...
All time, it's perfect. I'll amend that.
We have a motion and seconded to make Councilman Rab the voting delegate for the main municipal convention. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Outstanding work.
Item F, Wilson Hall.
Um, this is, is an update, and, and obviously, if anyone wants to speak other than that, our code officer and Larry Wall have discussed this. A number we've had, um, other meetings with people who've come in, who've expressed interest and discussed the option, the possibility of grant funding down the road. And Jeff has also contacted contractors in regard to not doing what was talked about last time, which was cutting that cupola all the way back to the roof and doing it, because that would destroy the ability to put it back. But instead, removing the posted part, lifting that off and capping the base and, and doing work around that cupola to keep water from going in. There's been a discussion of a membrane being used over the remainder of the roof on a temporary basis that would, and the estimates that we've gotten thus far are all well below the thirty thousand dollars cap that you talked about. The difficulty right now has been that many of the contractors are extremely busy right now. There is, um, the contractor that has, had given us a price to remove the thing, that he, they're still available. And one contractor that had submitted before, told me today that he is available. So, the plan is for that modified plan to move forward, which is not to take it all the way to the slope, because if it does, it, it removes, it, it destroys joints and things. It means you can't put it back together the same way it came apart. So, taking the posted part off and, and putting a cap over what remains is the current plan. It's just an update to let you know what we're doing. But, there's been a great deal of, um, discussion with people in, so...
Okay, any questions? Okay, item G.
This is the only time Wilson Hall's on the thing, so if anybody wants to, anybody from the public wants to...
Okay, there's nothing down here.
No, there's nothing down there.
Great. Any comments from the public on Wilson Hall?
Yeah.
I'm James Morrison. You all know who I am. I live up in East Bucksport. Now, I'm not here to blow my own horn. I'm not here to beat my own gum. I find those things to be a little too crass. What I'm here to tell you is that I have been around the town and to as many places as I could get to, and I apologize to anybody that I didn't get a chance to get to. And I've asked the people if they thought that the council should be spending any more money in regard to fixing, repairing, renovating Wilson Hall. I got quite a number of signatures. I'm not going to give those to you, because if I do, they become public. And the people whose names are on there, a great number of them, don't want their names to be publicized. So, uh, not everybody signed it. Some people wanted, wanted to, but didn't because they were afraid of repercussions. That was their words. Some people just plain said, no, they didn't want to sign it. I had people ask me where to send donations. Uh, I encouraged them to do donations. Um, they think that people who step forward and say, I wanna help Wilson Hall, and they all are real jacked up about doing it, nobody seems to be laying any money on the table in front of us. So, they don't like that. They think that if people wanna rebuild the hall, great, bring your money out and do it. But, they don't think the town should be putting their money into it. Thank you. Hope Jim Morrison, two thousand and eighteen.
Hey, there, folks. Stephen Tanpeter Jr. Um, I say that if, if it's feasible, fix it up. I like the jet priority. But, if it's not feasible, then I suggest we tear it down. Maybe we can get something brand-new that will pay taxes. Um, you know, like a nursing home, like the jet priority is, or another apartment complex that will bring in, you know, families or people that need the housing. So, that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm wondering if individuals have made donations. I made a small donation. It wasn't very much, but I know, uh, individuals are interested enough to be doing that. And, I guess we're talking to different people, because the people I've talked to are pretty excited about, uh, the fact that we're going to come together as a community to try to save it. So, I guess it's just a matter of who's willing to put their, their name out. But, um, I, I like the plan that you came up with last, last time of allowing time for the, the groups to see what they could do. And, uh, I, I hope you go forward with that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
To answer the question about donations, we did receive a five hundred dollar donation last Friday from a couple, I think, as Buckport ties. They heard about the issue around surrounding Wilson Hall, and they wanted to help out.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Okay, we'll go on to item G.
Mr. Mayor, I may, um, I don't understand this comment about people signing petitions and don't want their name revealed for some sort of imagined repercussions. Can anybody on the council or in the audience tell me that there've ever been any repercussions for anybody expressing their view? I've never heard of any in eight years on the council. Is the concern that their taxes are gonna be raised, which is ridiculous? I don't understand that. Could you elaborate on that, Jim?
Yes. They, they simply stated that they really didn't want their names out there in public, because they were afraid of repercussions for doing so.
And this is this list that you gathered that we can't see?
That's right.
I understand.
Let's, let's move on. Okay, we're gonna go on to item G. Ellis slash Gross Mobile Home Update.
If you remember, at the last, um, two council meetings ago, there was a, the question of a thirty-day period given. Um, they've, they've made substantial progress on everything that they said that they would do. And based on that, um, our code officer is working with them to get to the end of that, which will allow some temporary use of the septic tank as a holding tank. But, um, based on the amount of progress they're making, he's going to work with them to complete this. They are, he was sending them a letter notifying them that, and they're, um, to sit down with him and map out the final leg of this. But, um, that, the plan is that this will be resolved without further litigation or that. That's, it was, it appeared to be the councils and the, the property owners have made very large strides in the past thirty days in this. And, and while they're not entirely there, they're much closer than they were. And, um, Jeff is gonna work with them to get...
Good.
Very nice.
Now, do we have to, because the council voted a thirty-day period that they had have certain progress on?
He has the discretion, as the code officer, to...
We don't have to go back and take a vote on that. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
It's just, that, again, this is just an update, because that date was the time.
Okay, we're gonna go on to agenda items. First one being to adopt resolve two thousand and eighteen dash sixteen to approve contracting with Revision Energy to provide solar panels at the town garage.
Motion approved?
Second.
We have a motion and a seconded to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? Yes, sir?
Yes. I'm just, just wondering, are they taking responsibility for the roof?
For the roof?
When they apply the panels.
Yeah.
Because if there's any damage to the roof...
There's no, there's no structural damage. The way they do it, there's, there's nothing that goes into the roof at all. It's all...
Right. I, I understand that. It's clamped on the ribs, if I understand right. And when you clamp it on the ribs, you are gonna make contact with the roof, which takes a chance of damaging the roof, especially in a windstorm when the panels move up and down. So, are we liable for it, or are they liable for it?
Good question.
They own the system. If they damage our property and the construction, they are responsible for repairing the damage to areas. When or if the town takes ownership, if there's any damages that result at that time, the town would be liable. But, the period of time that Revision owns it, which is the first six years at least, or up to twenty, while they have ownership, they have liability for damage to where it's located on.
And they've done an engineering study of the structure of the town garage?
They've reviewed all of that, yes.
Okay. Anything further from the council on this? We have a motion and a seconded to approve the resolve. Any other comments out there in the public? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Going on to item B, to adopt resolve two thousand and eighteen dash seventeen to approve electrical service installation at a business park from Winkampah Line Construction at a cost of fourteen thousand seventy-five dollars to be paid from the Highway Construction Reserve. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a seconded to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
Um, is there a, a difference in cost if you only did a few of the, the areas in comparison to doing all of them at the same time? Is that a difference? Just asking.
No, the, the issue is, there are eight lots, seven of which have wetland issues, and the one lot that the interested party wants is dealing with out wetland issues, and it's the furthest one away.
Fair enough.
You gotta get it there.
Rich, before you, Rich, before you disappear. So, basically, they're gonna drop poles in, they're gonna lay all the copper right down to the last pole. And then, anything after that, it's the responsibility of the lot owner for whatever electrical needs he requires on the lot.
For the building. Yes, correct. We're laying...
So, we're not putting, we are not, this is not, as I read it, does not include any ground transformers or anything else. It's just the...
Everything you see there is what's there. The lots were all mapped out. One lot was bigger than two hundred and seventy-five feet, so it needed two poles.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is there some reason the power company isn't doing it itself?
The power company is, takes longer and is more expensive.
Wait, wait, wait.
That would be just like running it down the road.
I don't know what you mean by running it down the road. Sorry.
You're running it down the industrial park road, correct?
Yes, yes.
And all individual lots, so it's just like running down Main Street. The power company takes care of the bit.
Right. By the time, by the time we can get CMP to come out and do it, we will lose this business. So, it's a choice of providing additional jobs at a, at a lower cost to have Winkampah do it, or have CMP come in at a higher rate, do it when they are available to do it.
But, we get paid back for it from CMP when they buy it back?
That I do not have the answer to.
I know when I put the trailer back in, I went through the same issue. Every, every customer that gets on to that lot...
We own all those lots right now.
Yeah. So, it shouldn't have cost us any money. The CMP does it, it should make.
When we built our house, CMP charged way more than Winkampah. And we went with Winkampah. It makes absolutely no sense to go to the CMP when Winkampah will, will put in a hole for about half the price. And they don't pay it back.
No. They pay back to your own line. You know this one.
I guess I don't, what, what's the, you're saying that we can, we're gonna get paid back? We should get paid back? Why would that be?
Yeah. It would, because if you fund it yourself, they pay you back a percentage in bill every time somebody hooks on to it, they pay you back. That's why I was told.
We, there's no one beyond that.
If Winkampah, the way I understood it was, if Winkampah puts it in, you own the line, and you're responsible. They, they don't have any responsibility to it. So, if you get a power outage in the middle of the winter out there, the way I was told anyway, that you, you, you have to get another power company. Winkampah or somebody cannot fix it, because it's a privately-owned line there.
Well, I, I think the bottom line is, we need to get the poles installed, because we get a potential for business coming there. And, you know, you're saying we're supposed to get rate, paid back?
That's the way I was told.
Well, we can look into that, and hopefully, we will get paid back. But, I think the bottom line is, you know, we, we need to get the electrical services running. And at the present time, we own all the lots. So, does that change when we sell a lot to somebody else?
Supposedly, it's the number of customers that get on, pay back. Supposedly, it's the number of customers that put on the payback.
There's nowhere beyond us.
But there is no lots in beyond us too, so. Any other comments? From the council?
I guess I, did we research all this? I mean, I just.
That's what Rich is going to check on right this minute.
All I see is just the thing and it brings up a question that I guess I don't know the answer to. And it sounds like he has some valid points there, so. Rich, do you have any help with cost comparisons or what the deal is?
If you want me to call, I can, one time to get CMP out there and give you a cost comparison on that.
Did you call Winkin Paw yourself or did they?
No, I marked out the lots. I went the next day with Winkin Paw. We marked up the poles together, I went with Winkin Paw. I done it.
Well, it sounds like Central Main Power would get Winkin Paw to put the poles in, and then they would charge the town a fee for them to go to Winkin Paw. It sounds like we've gone to Winkin Paw on our own behalf. And I don't know how it is, how the power company would take over the poles or do we own the poles?
Who owns the poles in there presently?
Oh.
And the lots that are there now?
In the industrial park.
Some of the lots are owned, were sold. Not all the lots in there belonged to the town at one point. The industrial park was part Wardwell, part town, a lot for. So when I went through all the records that were left behind, there was no list of the poles because Osborne's was there first. That is not one through the town. That was through Wardwell. And A&amp;J Motorcycle Safety School, that was through Wardwell. And these are split. And then our lots begin after that. So the ones that were town lots would be Waterworld, Central Main Storage, and then AGL, which is Dean Hope. And then on the other side of the road, Gene Berry's old business and the Bacon Lot and the former Richard Ryder Building, which is French Reetigard.
I would assume that when the utility came in to put the transformer in to go to the business, they would have to contact the town and basically, I don't know whether they purchased the poles from us or they would have to make some type of agreement with us to put their equipment on the pole. So we either vote on it now or table it. We already have a motion and a second to read it down. Okay? So I'm just going to, any other comments from the public? From the council? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. And we'll do the research on see what the payback is. Okay, item C, to adopt resolve 2018-18 to approve a consent agreement between the town and Miles Fredden and Alan Kelly Hand.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D, to adopt resolve R2018-19 to approve a reduction in hours for the senior citizen director from 20 to 16 per week with the appropriate balance remaining to be used for the senior citizens program. How would the council like to proceed?
I make the motion that we amend that?
Second.
To whatever David Key suggests.
We have a motion to amend that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the resolution. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. What is the amended resolution?
As stated by the director there, that I think that her hours would remain as they are with the additional pay, the additional $3,000. Is that right, Peter?
Yeah. The town would find that $3,000 in undesigned re-balances and keep her hours the same.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to keep the senior citizen director's hours at 20 per week and provide additional funding to the senior center at the cost of $3,000 a year. Any questions from the public? Any comments? Yes, ma'am?
Charlotte Bridges Town Farm Road. I don't know how Sue Ann does what she does for 20 hours. She certainly can't provide what she's been providing under 16. She probably put a lot of her own time in. For the small amount of money involved, I think I like the fact that you're going to go ahead and keep her 20 hours.
Any other comments from the public? From the council?
I just, for the director Sue Ann, is this going to cause any problem with, have you made any alternate plans? This is going to interfere with, or are you acceptable to doing this?
I think this is just incredible.
Very good. That's all I need to know.
Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're going on to item nine, resignations, appointments, and assignments in elections. We have anything? Item 10, approve quick claim deed and discharge of deeds. Quick claim deed for 73 McDonald Street. Susan?
Yes, this releases a number of liens that were back in the 80s that appear not to have been discharged. They were paid but not discharged. And so this one quick claim takes care of all of those. The taxes are current on the property.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the quick claim deed. Anything from the public? More from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Maybe there's something else for this?
Yeah, somebody else has a clue. It's already passed over there, I think, that he signed.
Goes with that one there? Okay, item 11, town managers' report, department heads' reports. Susan?
First, congratulations to Chief Sean Gagin for being installed as the new president of the Maine Chiefs of Police Association. It was a great ceremony, and Chief Gagin gave an inspiring address to those in attendance in regard to the work done by police agencies in the state and his pride in the town of Bucksport.
Congratulations, chief.
And I encourage everyone to attend the benefit spaghetti dinner and silent auction at the high school on Saturday night from 5:00 to 7:00 to benefit Rich and Jen Rotella and their family. They've been battling serious illness, and this is a great way to show support for them and to have a great evening with other caring residents and visitors. It's at the high school.
Where would contributions be made if you're not able to attend?
Contributions are being accepted here at the town office. Jackie Hunt is taking them. Mel Allen from Yankee Magazine has been here this week interviewing a wide variety of people for a major story on Bucksport that is slated to be printed in the spring of 2018. We are very fortunate to have been selected for this honor, and I can't wait to see what he writes. Community and economic development director Rich Rotella was interviewed on Channel 5 yesterday in regard to the new electric car charging station, the changes in lighting on the waterfront, the council's decision to change the town office and public safety building to LED bulbs, and the solar project that will be installed on the town garage roof was a good story and one more positive recognition of what Bucksport is doing to position itself well for the future. And in addition, the waterfront lights have been updated, including the night sky features. And the town office LED project will start here next week. And following that, the public safety building will be done. I attended a meeting on Tuesday afternoon with representatives of Heart and Soul and Main Street Bucksport and the Comprehensive Plan and others that was organized by the Maine Development Foundation as a follow-up to the E-DOT meeting that was held here a year ago. It was all the federal people who came to see what was happening in Bucksport and see what they might be able to do to help since the loss of the mill. Those in attendance at this meeting did a good job of sharing information with Maine Development Foundation. And I received a follow-up email from the meeting facilitator about how impressed he continues to be with the energy, enthusiasm, and work being done in this community. And the first public open house meeting for the EPA grant for the redevelopment of the AIM property is going to be held on Tuesday, October 17, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The location is being finalized and informational flyers will be posted soon. The Facebook page for the project can be found at Adapt Bucksport, and the webpage is also active at AdaptBucksport.com. It is linked to the town website and will also be linked to the websites of other community groups. So that's my.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to comment on that. I know we've talked about this before, but that Yankee Magazine thing, that's 300,000 subscribers, over a million readers. You can't buy that kind of publicity. And I project that there's going to be somebody out there, when they read this very favorable article about Bucksport, they're going to say, boy, what a great place to live or to start a business. Because it's no one big thing that contributes toward what I refer to as the rebirth of Bucksport. It's a series of little things like that. And all the little things that the community's doing, people in this audience, you know, getting behind some of the ideas and contributing and supporting. So I'm really looking forward to that next summer, and I hope you do too.
Thank you. Okay, item 12, set public hearings or hold public hearings and approve approval of any licenses or permits. We're going to set a, we're actually going to have a public hearing, okay? Declare the public hearing open. Shall an ordinance be adopted titled General Assistance Ordinance Appendix Update A through D? Peter, you want to say anything about this or?
Honestly, this is just an update of the numbers that are changed each year based on the protection.
It comes from the state.
It's an automatic update. We don't have anything on it.
Okay, the public hearing's open. Anybody got any comments on this? Council? Okay. Declare the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Shall an ordinance be adopted titled General Assistance Ordinance Appendix Update A through D? Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item 13, discussion items not on the agenda for the council or the public. We'll open it up to the public first.
Hey, everybody. Stephen St. Peter Jr. Since the EV charger was installed, there's been a lot of people asking about it, and there's been people using it. People have been enjoying it. They've been given rave reviews, and I just want to say this is great for the town.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. I'm Nancy Minett, Bucksport resident, and I work for Bucksport Heart and Soul. I think you'll find in your packet that we provided you with a written update of our work over the past month, but I wanted to mention a couple other things. Right now, we finished gathering stories, and we're listening back to hundreds of stories from people here in Bucksport. And when we listen back to them, we are determining comments that they make that are values, what they value about their town, what they hope for as the town moves forward, concerns they have that they hope we can take the challenge to meet, and ideas of ways to make this town a really thriving community. We have listening sessions at our center, but also we've started to take our listening on the road. And we've gone to three individual homes so far. They invite their neighbors, they provide a little bit of refreshment, and so we're learning a whole other spectrum of the work. People listen to one of their community members, they're starting to say, oh, well, that's something that I was thinking about. They may not have shared a story during the time, but they're seeing how they're all connected and as a community that we share a lot of the same hopes and dreams and concerns, and then many unique ideas for the future. So we are going to show, we have just completed with over, I was sitting there trying to think how many volunteer hours was put into this movie. It's five minutes. And over 100 hours of volunteer work in the past month to, from writing the script, looking at our spreadsheet, and taking different comments, hope comments, concern comments, value comments, and idea comments that you'll see. We've just chosen six out of thousands of comments so far that we have put on our spreadsheet. We had two new volunteers that helped with this project. John Greenman, who worked for Public TV and has been very active in WERU, had the recording equipment that he brought to the studio one night. We had some old volunteers come back to be recorded to read some of these comments. And Hans worked on the photos, so it was a really wonderful community volunteer endeavor. The other thing, just before we show you this, we did pre-mare it at our core meeting on Monday night, two pretty high reviews. It will be shown before all the movies this weekend, the early shows at the Alamo, and it will also be shown next weekend at the Alamo before the featured movie. And we will have information, ways for people to become involved in the project. The other thing I just wanted to quickly mention, Jean-Paul Lalonde, who is a Bucksport Heart and Soul volunteer, and myself, were just back at 6:30 tonight from the Community Institute Program in Brunswick, Maine, last night and all day today, building strong places, communities, and leaders. And I have to say, everyone has heard about Bucksport. You know, when they say, oh, you're from Bucksport, we're hearing all these things about Bucksport, and so it's hard. I mean, that's, it's just really fun. And it's, they know that things are happening here in Bucksport and the energy and all those things that you've supported, and so it's exciting. So we'd just like our report to be a little different tonight, and here's the movie that will be shown. Can you speak a little louder? Can you start it again a little louder? Thank you, Chris Johnson and Rich for.
You shouldn't be thanking me for failing.
You'll get 60.
This is a nice picture of Chris Johnson.
That's it? That's the whole show?
Turn it up on your, on the computer itself.
I've got it turned all the way up, though, thank you.
You all set? All set.
All right. He had the, let's see what happens now.
Our community is recreating itself in the aftermath of nearly 100 years of being a hill town. We have the unique opportunity to ask ourselves what really matters to us in our community, what to be hoped for, what concerns do we have, what ideas have occurred. Bucksport Heart and Soul has been listening.
I like the fact that when you drive across the bridge, Bucksport looks like a modern painting. It's just this beautiful, perfect little neighborhood town.
I've just had a lot of neighbors help us out a lot for the years. We've had struggling times, and they've had struggling times. And it's just a community where we simply help each other. We had enough dummies out there to have a baseball team. We played a game or two, and we didn't have chores to do. We did everything from baking the maple syrup in the street, right straight through to the buttload of lard and stuff in the loiter. And they didn't travel to town very often.
I love being able to see the stars at nighttime.
Heart and Soul was one of the deciding factors that we chose to let in Bucksport because you were proactive. You were trying to get new people in there. And we thought, you know, we want to be part of this, and we love the area.
Thanks to all of you who have shared your stories at neighborhood block parties, at story gathering events around town, or by stopping into Bucksport Heart and Soul headquarters, your participation is the foundation on which our community's future will be built.
I'd like to see more community presence.
I'd like to see more community presence, like the Boney Alley, or something like that. It was a good place for people to get together, have fun, and just hang out with each other, have a good family time.
Maybe we could have a waterfront.
We could make more use of the Performing Arts Center, and venues on the waterfront to develop entertainment as a source of building our economy.
They need to be low-income apartments, because a lot of people are rooting away from Bucksport because they can't find any place to live.
I feel good to see this really good garden.
It's a new day in our community. We cherish our past and enthusiastically look to the future. And if we are to do this well, we must respond to the concerns we've heard, because we need to address those challenges to create a thriving community for all.
Our difficult aspects get over by the day, and we need some good things to learn young people.
It's always been a problem trying to get a job in Bucksport, and I was lucky.
I believe the drug-pollution in Bucksport is worse today than it was when I was younger.
I have issues with the river and the quality of what is going on in the river.
Bucksport doesn't look good downtown when you drive through. That vacant lot, the buildings, and each end of town.
You have to remember, even though there's a large group of people here wanting something, there's just as many voters out there who don't want it. You don't want to have decisions made just on the basis of 20 or 30 people coming in and thinking this is what the whole community wants.
More than 250 people of different ages and gender and from all parts of the community have shared their stories with Bucksport Heart and Soul volunteers. Some are lifelong residents, others have just moved here. One thing they all have in common, each has hopes and dreams for this place they call home.
Just more stuff to do with Bucksport. I'd like to see more main business facilities come to Bucksport, such as markets, what means?
Love to have bus service to Ellisworth, they're fast and to Bay Harbor more often.
More of an awareness of environmental concerns.
I hope there could be that balance between where the town has come from and thoughtful planning for the future, and keeping young people at the center. Once we have the quality of life in place so good, that people are going to want to come here.
In this presentation, we've heard a random sampling of nearly 2,000 comments. Heart and Soul listening volunteers have identified as examples of what matters to the people in our community. Going forward, Bucksport Heart and Soul will offer opportunities for people to tell us if we got it right. Check out our Facebook page, our website, and look for flyers around town to discover current opportunities to be involved in this process. As one citizen shared, "One thing I love about Bucksport is the community. We are all one big family. We creating our community means all of our family puts on board. Bucksport Heart and Soul means you."
Thank you.
Thought we had that song today. We obviously didn't.
Thank you, Chris.
There's still a good picture of you up there, Chris. Any other discussion items from the public? Anything further from the council?
Just, did you, go ahead, Chris. I didn't know if you were signing or if you were going to say.
I was thinking a little time. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Okay. I just want to, I was, like many of us, we were at the induction ceremony for chief, and seeing him up there and the respect that his peers have for him made, made me proud to have you as our chief. And I think, you know, we look at our chief, our fire chief, our police chief, so many others, we have a lot to be proud of, the people that work for our town and with our town, so kudos to you again on that. No. Watching the video made me think of, I got a 20-year-old who I don't really think, think so much, but he was writing a paper last week about this little mill town, and how years ago, people thought that the heart of this town was the mill, when it actually is the people in it. And he said that, and then watching that, I'm like, the kid actually does think. It's just, it's amazing what, you know, Heart and Soul made sure Bucksport Wednesdays are made and done. It's, it's just great to see. And it, and actually, the young, younger generation are actually seeing it too, so.
Any other discussion items? Okay, we'll go on to item 14, designation of topic for committee assignments or scheduling of committee meetings. Do we have anything?
We need to schedule another solid waste committee meeting for prior to the next council meeting, is that?
Are you solid waste?
I am. Most of us are.
You okay?
So, do you want 6:30 as a half hour now, or do you want 6?
I'm out of town, so I won't be.
What do you think, Jeff? Can we get through this in half an hour, you think, for the last couple pages?
Fees are involved, so maybe an hour.
We might go for a half hour. Is this combined again, or is this just solid waste? No, I think you're off the hook.
Well, no, that ordinance is supposed to, the ordinance is supposed to come back once he's updated it, so it'll probably be combined.
Six o'clock?
Yes.
Any others?
I appreciate it, Paul.
If not, if no other committee assignments or scheduling committee meetings, we'll go on to item 15, which is adjournment.
Motion.
We have motion and second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.